Good afternoon, everyone. I hope you can all hear me.
We can.
And welcome to the call meeting of the Middle Tennessee State University Board of Directors. As is our practice, we would like to call this meeting to order by having the Pledge of Allegiance. General Huber, would you be available, please, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, General Huber. As also is our practice, and it is a privilege for us to introduce, welcome, and recognize a student veteran. I would ask General Huber, please, to introduce us to the student veteran. General Huber?
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I am honored to present to you Navy veteran Ben Thompson. He was in college studying electronics, communication, and decided to enlist in the Navy. He enlisted in the Navy and received his training as a Navy corpsman, and then he participated in combat in Desert Shield, Desert Storm, attached to the 3rd Marine Division under the command of our dear friend at the time, two-star Jim Mattis. And for those of you who remember going into Kuwait, you probably remember it differently than I do or than Ben did, but it was a horrific belt of obstacles, ditches, tank ditches, biological and chemical munitions. So as a corpsman attached to the Marines, whose task was to breach the obstacle belt and clear the way for the Army to then come in and throw Saddam Hussein out of Kuwait, it was a horrific experience. He spent eight years in the Navy and then decided he would go back to pursue electronics and communications. He had the privilege to be married and begin his family, and he had the responsibility to care for his mother, who was ill. So he spent the next 27 years of his life working in communications. One of the things that I've had the opportunity to learn here at this incredible university with our veterans is I would think that what you did in uniform, you would automatically transition and do in a different attire. And what I found from my experience here is just because you drove a truck in the military doesn't mean you want to drive for UPS. And the richness and the breadth and the depth of the subjects that are offered here and presented here. So he spent 27 years working for a company in electronics and communications, and then decided he wanted a change. And so this was when the pandemic hit. It took a toll on the business that he was working in. He decided it was a good time to go back to school. He did a reassessment of where he was in his life, and he transferred here to Middle Tennessee State University, initially with the desire to build something, to build residential or commercial property. And then he met Mr. Strong. And Mr. Strong convinced him that concrete industry management was the only way to build anything. And so now he's ready to graduate in December of 2024 with his undergraduate in concrete industry management. Ladies and gentlemen, Ben Thompson.
I am grateful to be here. A lot of things have happened over the years to get me to this point. I am challenged by a lot of things in a lot of ways. As General Huber said, I am a veteran of war, and those things have been instrumental in my life in making me who I am. I came to the university, like you said, after a pandemic and some tariff issues that forced my company to make some decisions. Part of that decisions, or those decisions anyway, were to let some of the people go. And I think it was more a blessing than it was something that hurt me. I had grown, not tired of the things that I was doing, but I wanted something different, something more challenging. And the opportunity came, and I sought to find a university that was, had everything that I needed. And I looked, not far and wide, but I looked quite a bit to try to find what really would match me. Middle Tennessee was close enough to home, had everything that I need to offer, and I thought I was going to come here and do residential or commercial building. And again, like General Huber said, Dr. Strong has a way of strong-arming people that way. We talked about some things, and he showed me, more than anything, some things that were possible that way. And from that, I fell in love with the program. Prior to getting here, I had to admit to the university, and in that process, I had to go through the Daniel Center. They wouldn't let me go any further without going through the Daniel Center. And from there, I met Jeremy Winsett, who brought me in. And he said, you got to do this, you got to do this, you got to do this, and you're good. And by the way, I'm going to send you to Chris. Chris Rochelle brought me in in his office there and just talked to me about, you know, the things that were possible. And he just showed me this array of companies and things like that that were almost begging for people to come in and be with them. And of course, then I met Mrs. Miller over there. She runs that department hands down. It's just, it's awesome. She's that energetic bunny, you know, that just keeps going and going, but she does it with a smile. So if you can imagine the bunny just shooting by you and just turn around and smile, I mean, that's what she is. She just really, and she brings that to the team as well. I've not met anybody there that was not trying to help and didn't mind doing it willingly. So I'm grateful to be here. I'm thankful for the university. I'm thankful for the Daniel Center for just giving me this opportunity. And I'm thankful for you guys for having me and honoring me with that. Thank you.
Thank you for that introduction of the student veteran, General Huber. Our next item is a, just a brief comment on my part. Wanted to let you know that Chairman Smith obviously is unable to attend the meeting, so I will be chairing this meeting in his absence. He sends his best regards and will be obviously at the next session. Just from my perspective, September is always an energizing time of year. It's the new academic year. There is energy on campus. People are excited about coming back to the university. And so it's just, it's a perfect time of year, and I'm sure President McPhee will mention something about that in his remarks. But again, want to welcome you to campus, and I apologize for not being able to be with you all in person. With that, I would ask Mr. Floyd to please call the roll to ensure that we have a quorum. Mr. Floyd?
Trustee Baker?
Present.
Trustee Boyd?
Present.
Trustee Delay?
Here.
Trustee Jones?
Present.
Trustee Martin?
Here.
Chair Smith? Vice Chair Vannick?
Vice Chair Vannick, because you are participating in this meeting electronically in accordance with Tennessee Code Annotated Section 8-44-108(c)(3), there are two questions that will need to be answered for the record. First, are you able to hear me and other trustees clearly so that you can participate in this meeting?
I can.
Second, are there any other individuals in the room with you? And if so, please identify them.
There is no one here with me.
The minutes reflect that Vice Chair Vannick is able to hear those present in his room and that no one is present in the room with her. Trustee Wright?
Here.
Trustee Mim?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Before we move on to the agenda items, I would like to ask President McPhee if he has any opening remarks.
No matter, Vice Chair. I will make some remarks at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I would like to move to the first item on the agenda, which you can find under Tab 1, which is the approval of the minutes from the June 20, 2023 Regular Session Board Meeting. Those materials were also provided to the board members in advance. I would like to call for a motion and second to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, and second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Were there any discussion? There being none. Mr. Floyd, could you please do a roll call for the approval vote?
Yes. Trustee Baker?
Approve.
Trustee Boyd?
Approved.
Trustee Delay?
Approved.
Trustee Jones?
Approved.
Trustee Martin?
Approve.
Vice Chair Vannick?
Approved.
Trustee Wright?
Approved.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Next item of business, I would like to ask Trustee Wright for her committee report and action items from the Academic Affairs, Student Life, and Athletics Committee. You can find the materials under Tab 2. Trustee Wright, may I turn the table or turn the floor over to you?
Yes, and thank you, Vice Chair Vannick. The Academic Affairs, Student Life, and Athletics Committee met on August 15, 2023. The committee approved the minutes from its May 23, 2023 meeting. Today, I would like to present one action item for the board's consideration. A proposal to merge the Department of Global Studies and Human Geography and the Department of Political Science and International Relations was presented by Provost Mark Burns. The combined department will be named Political and Global Affairs effective May 13, 2024. Our committee unanimously approved the academic department merger. Informational items before the committee included an enrollment report and an update on athletics. So Vice Chair and trustees, materials outlining the committee's actions were made available for your review prior to this meeting and are contained in your board notebooks. That concludes my report, and I would like to make a motion for approval.
Thank you, Trustee Wright. Trustee Wright, having made a motion for approval of the action item, do I have a second?
Second.
A second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, any question? If not, I'd like to ask Mr. Floyd to conduct a roll call, vote for approval.
Trustee Baker?
Approve.
Trustee Boyd?
Approved.
Trustee Delay?
Approved.
Trustee Jones?
Approved.
Trustee Martin?
Approve.
Vice Chair Vannick?
Approved.
Trustee Wright?
Approved.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item of business, I would like to ask Trustee Boyd for his committee report from the Audit and Compliance Committee. Trustee Boyd, may I turn the floor over to you?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Vice Chairman Vannick. The Audit and Compliance Committee met on August 15, 2023. The committee approved the minutes from its May 21, 23 meeting. Today, I have two action items the committee would like to present for the board's consideration. The first action item was approval of annual report for audit and consulting services. Tennessee Code Annotated 49-14-102, along with the MTSU Board of Trustees' Bylaws and Policy on Board Committees, requires an annual comprehensive report on the internal audit function be submitted to the committee's review. The report was submitted for the committee's review. MTSU Policy 70, Internal Audit, Section Roman numeral 7, letter C, requires approval of the audit plan by the Audit and Compliance Committee. The internal audit for fiscal year 2024 was presented by Ms. Diane Audgrass, Interim Chief Audit Executive. Do we need to have that approved? Vice Chair Vannick?
I think we should go to the second action item as well.
Okay. The second, excuse me, second action item was a request for approval of the risk assessment reporting. It refers to Section 9-18-104 of the Financial Integrity Act, which requires institutions of higher education to prepare and provide a management assessment of risk to the state of Tennessee's Commissioner of Finance and Administration and to the Comptroller of the Treasury by December 31 each year. For 2023, the President's Division and the Information Technology Division performed and provided risk assessment reporting. In addition, a risk assessment report was completed detailing university-wide risk and control activities. Similar to MTSU's risk assessment reporting of 2022, the risk assessment documents were designated as confidential and were discussed in the non-public executive session of the Audit Committee. Mr. Drew Harpu, Assistant Vice President of Compliance and Enterprise Risk Management, presented the risk assessment reports to the committee for approval prior to the report's submission to the state as required by law. Informational items included the quarterly report, results of internal audit reports, the results of external reviews, and discussion of audits, investigations, and litigations during the executive sessions. Trustee, trustees, excuse me, I'm pleased to report that all action items before the Audit Committee were approved unanimously, and the materials outlining these items were made available for your review prior to this meeting and are contained in your board notebooks. So Vice Chairperson and fellow trustees, that concludes the Audit Committee report.
Thank you, Trustee Boyd. Would you be making a motion for approval of the two action items?
Yes. Do you want to do them together? Is that suitable?
Unless Mr. Floyd says we need to do them separately, yeah.
Together is fine.
Okay. Audit Committee then recommends that we approve both action items presented.
So Trustee Boyd has placed a motion for approval of the two action items. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Wright. I'm, I can't see the screen, so I'm assuming it was Trustee Wright. Is there any discussion? If not, may I ask Mr. Floyd for a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Baker?
So approve.
Trustee Boyd?
Approved.
Trustee Delay?
Approved.
Trustee Jones?
Approved.
Trustee Martin?
Approve.
Vice Chair Vannick?
Approved.
Trustee Wright?
Approved.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. The next item on the agenda is the committee report from the Executive and Governance Committee, and I will be presenting that on behalf of Chairman Smith. The Executive and Governance Committee met on August 15, 2023. The committee approved the minutes from its March 14, 2023 meeting. Today, I would like to present two action items for the board's consideration. The first action item before the committee was review and approval of the 2023 Self-Evaluation Instrument. Board Secretary Floyd reminded us that the Middle Tennessee State University Accreditation Body, the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges, SACs can't pronounce it, so I'm just going to say S-A-C-S-C-O-C, requires a governing board to define and regularly evaluate its responsibilities and expectations. This is contained in Standard 4.2G. As evidence of compliance with that standard, the SACS-C-O-C reminds a regular, recommends a regular self-board evaluation. The Executive and Governance Committee is responsible for overseeing the performance of the Board of Trustees and, as such, is charged with preparation of the board's self-evaluation procedures and instrument. The committee approved the proposed 2023 Self-Evaluation Instrument. It was approved subject to any amendments at this board meeting. The next action item before the committee, and also presented by Mr. Floyd, was authorization to conduct board self-evaluation prior to the November 2023 Board of Trustees' Meeting and the adoption of a recurring schedule. The Executive and Governance Committee is charged with implementation of the regular cycle of board self-evaluation. The committee will direct the Board Secretary to administer the self-evaluation survey over a specified period, compile the responses received, and report results to the board chair. Finally, there was one information item, discussion of the 2021 self-evaluation results and action for improvement. I'm pleased to report that all action items before this committee were approved, and the materials outlining these actions were made available for your review prior to this meeting and are contained in your board notebooks. At the committee meeting, Chairman Smith asked board members to share any comments or edits to the 2023 Self-Evaluation Instrument with the Board Secretary. Mr. Floyd has compiled the submitted proposals, which are also included in your board notebooks for consideration. Fellow trustees, that concludes my report. And Mr. Floyd, I'm wondering, given the fact that there were some comments back from the trustees with respect to the instrument, would you be, would you be able to go through the comments and the response to those comments?
Yes, I'll be glad to present that. I mean, first make reference to page 47 in your materials. I received or was forwarded comments from trustees Boyd and Martin. Those comments and suggestions to the self-evaluation tool are reflected beginning on page 47 and conclude on page 52 of your materials. First, I'll highlight a proposal by trustee Martin. And her suggestion is to adjust the scale that we currently use presently. There are five choices or options that we have in response to the initial set of questions. Her suggestion is to reduce it to four choices and to eliminate the option of neutral so that the four choices would be strongly agree, agree, disagree, or strongly agree. So I welcome your thoughts on that proposal that she has.
I would tell you, the reason I made this proposal is that recent evaluation study says that in small groups, people tend to go neutral. They don't use the extremes on either end, and they just go to the center. And that leaves you with a significant number of people not really weighing in on the process. So if you don't have to stay with four, you could go to six, but the idea is you use an even number so that you've, you have a sense of, okay, are we more negative or more positive? And we don't end up with lots of neutrals. So that's the reason for the suggestion.
She's our mathematical and statistical genius, so I would go with what she says.
Yeah. I'm in agreement with that. Sounds like a good change.
And what I'll do is I'll make note of your discussion here, and once we finish going through the tool, we can present it as an amendment to the, to the tool and go forward from there.
So I'm sorry, Mr. Floyd, could you please? So what we would be voting on today is the framework and the overall document, the overall instrument.
Correct.
And then there would be a subsequent vote on the changes that we may discuss today?
Yes, there'll be, well, first, there'll be a vote to amend the tool. The E&amp;G Committee approved the tool subject to edits by the full board. So now is our opportunity to finalize the instrument. And once that amendment is made, then we can vote on the E&amp;G action items as a whole, as amended.
Okay. Thank you. So we will, so there's further discussion with respect to those recommendations, correct?
I will, on page 47, I'll skip down to number three. I discussed number two with trustee Martin, and those items are reflected in Article 3 of our bylaws and Section 11 of the Policy on Committees. And number three, trustee Martin proposes categorizing the questions presented in Part 1 of the survey. And I guess I'll let you, trustee Martin, if you have any thoughts on that.
Sure. The idea is that you want to help people get in a frame of mind to consider a major topic that covers three or four questions and then to move on to the next topic. So you're not trying to write a letter, vacuum the floor, and load the dishwasher back around in circles. So that, the categories that I suggested were the ones from the training, from the governing board, American governing board, as the categories of the five major focus points of the board of our actions over our existence. That may be more than what we want to consider because I did not presume to categorize each of these questions. They're all on target, and they belong in one of these categories. This may be a thing that we recommend to the next iteration, but I think it is something that needs to happen because you don't want to be thinking, you don't want to be jumping from question to question between different topics and coherent thoughts.
So trustee Martin, I think that it's a good suggestion. I do think, though, that it is valued, and it's one that we really, I think, should have additional conversation at the Executive and Governance Committee level, and would really value your input as part of that discussion. And one of the things I was going to mention when we concluded this discussion was that I think it would be appropriate, and I need to talk to Chairman Smith about this, but I think it would be appropriate for us to have a conversation as a committee to talk about future evaluations and future instruments and what we might do in order to elevate the level of the assessment. But that for this purpose, so that we actually get this out the door in a reasonable period of time, that we continue with the, sort of the structure that we have right now. But I do think that these are ideas that we should take into consideration, and I think they warrant a much deeper conversation. And so that would be my suggestion, but obviously that's subject to forward discussion as well.
I would second your comments. This is too much editing to do on the fly, but it's editing that needs to be done sooner or later.
Okay. Perfect.
With that, I'm sorry, go ahead. With that, I'll move forward. My next comments relate to page 49 and the actual questions that are presented. You'll note, question number one, trustee Martin proposed an edit here. From my perspective, I don't have any concerns with this edit. From my perspective, I don't have any concerns with this edit, but it's at the board's discretion.
Makes perfect sense, given the timing of this next survey.
I think, I agree with Pete. I think that this is, and with Mary's suggestions, it reads much better, and it's much clearer. So I would be comfortable with these edits.
The next item for consideration is question five. There's an insertion.
Also.
I'm sorry.
I think that this is much clearer, and it's actually much more relevant, at least from my perspective. I don't know, Mr. Floyd, if you have any issues or concerns with this edit?
No, I'm fine with this edit as well. On page 50. Question 13. I actually have an edit that I propose is just to add the word "board" before "decisions." And then you see trustee Martin's edit there in green.
Again, makes very good sense.
All right, thank you. Question 14. I did have a suggestion here. The original question is, "The board demonstrates a concern for the success of students, faculty, and staff." With regards to trustee Martin's comments, I would propose that that sentence reads that "the board demonstrates a concern for the success of students, faculty, and staff." I spoke with trustee Martin and just expressed I thought this should be the same standard for faculty, students, and staff, as opposed to a concern for success of students and then well-being of faculty and staff.
Trustee Martin, are you comfortable with that suggested modification?
Sure, that's fine. Parallel construction is always a good thing. The one thing I would say is we can leave it as all one, or we could split it into three questions because students, faculty, and staff have sort of different relations and needs with the university as a whole. But I think putting it all in one right now is appropriate, and changing, as per Mr. Floyd's suggestion, is fine. But I think it's critical that we get faculty and staff mentioned in our evaluation document.
And I like.
So to your point, trustee Martin, I think that what we should do is add this to that sort of list of other topics that we should include in a conversation as we work to continuously improve the instrument that we use for evaluations.
I would suggest that we include it here, as Mr. Floyd amended, and then put a special star by it to include it for revisiting during that editing process.
And I'd like to.
Yeah, and I think that, I really do like also Mr. Floyd's sort of construction, if that's comfortable for you and for the rest of the board.
And, Vice Chair, I'd like to also look at reviewing it to divide it into the three. I think it can be very different for the three, and it may change by board member on how they view the different three and their support. And so I would like to consider that.
So trustee Wright, are you suggesting, then, that we make that modification in this iteration of the document or for further discussion?
I mean, if that doesn't complicate the process, I'd like to see that modification.
That's at the board's discretion. I can accommodate that.
Okay. That would be my suggestion, then. I like.
Okay. Okay. All righty, so that would be the recommendation for an amendment to this version. Okay. Mr. Floyd?
Yes, next is, and it's not how I any materials, but question 20. "The board understands the importance of regional and program accreditation." The word "regional," I propose that we strike that and substitute it with "institutional." And that more accurately reflects our current accreditation.
I think that makes a lot of sense, so I would be very comfortable with that modification.
Next, on page 51. We have five questions that were proposed by trustee Martin. Regards to question 23. As she's written it, I would suggest striking the words "and" leads "in." Other than that, I will leave that at the board's discretion.
So this is, this particular section is the one in particular that I was thinking really deserves a lot more conversation and investigation and review rather than just trying to cram it into a short period of time. I think these are really good ideas, and I'm concerned that by trying to add these at this version and at this stage, we would delay the process further. But what I would also like to do is to say that these questions are ones that we need as a committee and then ultimately as a board to somehow include in this evaluation document. I don't know if, trustee Martin, are you comfortable with that kind of an approach with these additional questions?
I am. Editing on the fly isn't ever a good idea, and these are substantive enough that we don't want to extend this meeting well past where we get tired and don't take it seriously. These questions, background information, these five questions basically came from the American Governors Board training documents that Bill Jones and I were given to read as new people coming on to the board. And they were very soundly connected to the actions of the board in its ideal, in an ideal state. So I put them in here to bring them to our attention and to give them a good thorough working over before we add the appropriate reconfigured questions to the next iteration. I think that would be wise.
Excellent, all right. Is there any further discussion around that idea from the board members? Okay, Mr. Floyd, where are we now?
Page 52, please. So now we're in Part 2 of the survey. And the first question presented was, "What are the strengths of the board?" Trustee Martin proposed adding additional context to that with the language she presents there.
And the background for that suggestion is that if you do evaluations, I'm thinking particularly evaluations of teaching, but it generally, it happens and applies to lots of other areas. People don't keep lists in their heads of things they want to remember to say. They make a mental note as they go along, but then they don't keep them in their forefront of their mind, and when they're asked, they kind of go blank. And with students, we have the, at another university I was at, we had the infamous question 13. The first 12 questions were things like, "Did the teacher teach the topic? Did the teacher show up on time? Did the instructor give you sufficient advance notice of exams?" or whatever. Very cut-and-dried, positive activities. Then question 13 said, "On the overall, how would you rank your instructor?" There was no correlation between the first 12 items and the 13th. 13th item was, "I like the person." That's how it was interpreted and voted on. So what we've done is we've asked, "What are the strengths of the board? Do we like what we're doing there?" Sure. If you break it down into giving people suggestions about, "Well, what do you think about developing the mission? What do you think about the reputation, et cetera?" Then you get more concrete and directed answers. And these items that were listed here were, once again, from that AGB training. And this is, once again, something we can kick into the next iteration if we choose.
Now, I think your explanation makes a whole lot of sense, trustee Martin. I think in sort of the real-world environment in which people sort of say, "Yeah, we're good. You know, we're a strong board." But, you know, I want, I think it does warrant, because it is substantive, a further discussion. You know, are these the kinds of things that, are we missing anything? Are we, do we need to, can we consolidate some of these things? Where are some other areas of strength that we should highlight? Because we may or may not be delivering on those. So I guess I would like to hear from the rest of the board whether or not this is something that we want to include in this iteration, or whether it's something that we can add to the list that we're creating for further discussion and, you know, as we say in Japanese manufacturing, kaizen improvement.
I guess I'll just say one more thing. I would be mildly in favor of including the green statement in Part 2, Section 1, in this iteration, knowing that we would revisit it because it's not doing any harm. It's not changing the nature of the question. It's just giving you some context and reminders about the kinds of things you want to think about, and then we can make it better and improve it subsequently.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree as well.
Mr. Floyd, any concerns?
I can make that adjustment, thank you. I'll proceed to the next question. What would you consider to be the board's major accomplishments? In the red, excuse me, the red language there is from the E and G committee meeting. I incorporated that here. In the blue, you have trustee Boyd's proposal, and then in the green, you have trustee Martin's proposed language. With that, Vice Chair Vannick, I welcome your comments and others.
So I guess my question on Part 2, Item 2. My concern is, with the blue language, is that we're focusing on the university's accomplishments, but we're not evaluating the university here, we're evaluating the board. This is a document that is to focus on what has the board accomplished since the most recent self-evaluation, I guess. So I don't want to create confusion about board responsibilities and who it is that's actually being evaluated here. If I'm looking at what are the university's major accomplishments, I'm going to be looking at President McPhee and his team to say, "What have you all done?" And that is an annual process as well. But really here, what we're paying attention to is what is it that we, as a board, are accountable for? And how have we measured up against those accountabilities? And maybe I'm misreading it, but that's kind of how this modification, modified language strikes me.
I agree with your comments. I think our assignment here is to evaluate our board.
I think the reason I put that is, if you look on down to question 3, the board, in our bylaws, the Board of Trustees' responsibilities of the board provide insight and guidance to the university's strategic direction. I'm not sure we have accomplishments in that we're providing guidance and direction. All right, our only employee is Dr. McPhee, so I'm not sure, when we say, "What are our goals?" Our goals are to provide, or what are our accomplishments? Our accomplishments should be providing strategic direction if we're following what the board says. So I'm not sure we have, the board itself has accomplishments. That's where I think it's confused. That's why I had, the university has accomplishments, but I'm not sure we, as a board, do. So, but.
Well, and that's a very, that's a very interesting perspective on that, trustee Boyd. I think I would, I would suggest that the board's accomplishments are, in fact, delivering on the responsibilities of the board as articulated in the bylaws. So have we, as a team, as the body, provided actionable insight and guidance to the operational management of the university? Or have we not, have we failed to deliver on that responsibility? To me, I think we have to stick very closely to what the responsibilities of the board are as they're articulated in the bylaws. And to overstep into the accomplishments of the university, which is an operational responsibility, I think would create, and I'm not going to become a legal expert here because I am a retired lawyer, a problem from the perspective of what our authority is. We are oversight, and so we cannot directly influence the university's accomplishments. We can say that management of the university has not done what it should be doing, and then it becomes our responsibility to take action with respect to its leadership. That would be my thinking on that, and I'm obviously open to Mr. Floyd's interpretation of what the bylaws require of this board.
Would it be helpful to change accomplishments to activities and then kick further consideration into the next iteration?
Mr. Floyd, what are your thoughts about making that modification?
From my perspective, the language in the question, as edited by the E and G committee, is appropriate. Reason being, in the board bylaw that we're discussing here, 3.2, now I'll just read it in entirety, "For insight and guidance to the university's strategic direction, charging the president with leading the strategic planning process." So it's the president's role and responsibility to lead the strategic aim pursuits of the university. It's the board's responsibility to provide insight and guidance in that. But ultimately, in terms of identifying what those aims are, whether they've been obtained, falls on the president. With that, in my opinion, I think the first iteration of the question is appropriate.
So the first iteration being the one that has the red markings?
Yes.
Okay, so from what you just said, again, I'm not a big deal, but what you just said, I think it's a yes or no question. Did we provide strategic direction to the president? Yes or no? Because then it becomes his responsibility. But again, I'm, my perspective.
I think that's a very valid discussion point, trustee Boyd. I really think that we need to get into this one a little bit more because I think this has been an ongoing conversation about what are the board's responsibilities and accountabilities? And I'd like to have a deeper discussion and maybe even part, as part of a, one of the requirements of being on this board and being a board is to have continuing education. And I think that that could fit very nicely into one of the responsibilities that we have, which is to have this continuing education about responsibilities and accountabilities and best practices going forward.
I do not believe it's just a yes or no question, and the reason for saying that is certainly we were supposed to provide that guidance. But if the university is still not achieving those goals as that guidance is provided, it's our responsibility to evaluate and make changes necessary to make sure the university does do that. So it's not just, are we providing the guidance, but we're responsible for evaluation and so forth.
Yeah, and I think different board members can have very different perspectives on this. I mean, we may feel like we've done it in some areas, like academic, but maybe somebody will feel they didn't do it in another area, like athletics. So I don't think it's a yes or no question either.
Well, and I think that what's important here to understand is that this is not a yes or no question. This is a question where you have the opportunity, as a respondent, to talk about what you see is happening. So it's a narrative. It is not a check-the-box yes or no. So it's, it's, it's a narrative, it is not a check the box, yes or no. And it's not a, it's not a scale, like the earlier questions, where, you know, you go either one to five or one to four, or whatever that number is that we've decided on. This is really where you have an opportunity to share your thinking and your concerns or your praise, for lack of a better term.
Madam Vice Chair, I also think, and we have our accreditation person here, Mary Horswelly, SACs and its standards and governance is very clear on this issue as well. So when you do have this discussion, I do think you need to make sure that the board is acting consistent with SAC's guidelines in terms of governance versus operation of the university.
So I guess the suggestion is that we have this larger discussion as part of the conversation that we discussed earlier, and that for this iteration of the document, that we use the language in, that has the red, the red typing in, as the edit to this particular question. Is that what I'm, is that the sense of the board at this point?
Yes.
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 Okay. Okay, Mr. Floyd?
Next, for your consideration, is Question 3. What specific goals would you suggest the board pursue for next year? You'll see comments there from Trustee Boyd and also Trustee Martin for your review and consideration.
So I guess the question is, in terms of benchmarks, and President McPhee, please help me with this, and Mr. Floyd as well, aren't, isn't, isn't that what the accrediting bodies do? Is what we're supposed to be doing, is that considered to be a benchmark?
Yes, and I'm looking at Dr. Horswelly here. In fact, we're in the middle of that, as you know, with our reaffirmation, so the answer is yes.
So that's already written out for us. So there, I guess the question is, and maybe this is a modificate, maybe this is kind of a hybrid thing, what specific goals or, or issues would you suggest that the board pursue for next year might be something that we would consider? Any reaction, Mr. Floyd, to that?
I like the word objectives.
Okay. I think that makes...
I'm sorry, I don't have any additional comments on that. I think it's...
So would you be okay, and I guess that's an accreditation issue, I think objectives make sense, but I don't want to run afoul of the accrediting bodies' guidance and requirements.
I think we're fine substituting objectives there.
Sure.
Okay, all right, so I think the sense that I'm getting of the board is that we can make that modification using the term objectives. Mr. Floyd, any other comments on the document?
Lastly, Question 4. Trustee Martin just had a comment there at the end of the question, weighing importance or significance.
Do we still have Vice Chair present? There we go. We lost that for a second. My, my only reason that I put them in here is you're going to get a lot of ideas from a lot of different people, and some of them could be from as simple as, please put water at every, at every seating place, to something as complex as we can imagine. So some people will be in one place when they answer this question, and other people will be in another place, and it would be helpful to know how important I think it is. But that's completely easy to leave off, too.
So I guess the question then becomes, again, it's, the nuances here are important, and I'm a little concerned that, again, to your point, Trustee Martin, when we're editing on the fly, we're going to be going back and forth. My suggestion would be, for this year, to continue with what we've got currently as the draft, and then put this in with the other topics that we need to discuss. I think that as we start to reconfigure the assessment document as a whole, I think we're going to start seeing a whole bunch of other stuff that will require discussion, debate. What are we actually asking ourselves to say? What are we, what are we trying to get out of each of the individual trustees in terms of reaction, assessment? So given this topic, again, it's, it's a much deeper question than simply changing one word here or one word there. Would it be okay with this board, obviously, and it's open to discussion, to leave the language as we had originally drafted it for this go-round? And then begin in earnest a discussion on how this document will look for the next assessment, which will be in 2024?
And Chris, are you talking about all the discussion today?
No, no, I'm talking about the one of, when we, we can talk about issues, benchmarks, goals, whatever.
I agree, I totally agree with number four, leaving it as it is.
I agree, too.
That would be number three, by the way, not number four.
Number three, we changed to objectives.
Yeah, number four.
Oh, we did change to objectives?
Yeah, and number four.
Okay.
Right.
My notes are, sorry, I better change that.
And then I think...
Okay, so four, we'll just leave. As is. Any other comments, questions, Mr. Floyd?
Mr. Floyd, is there a suggestion in number five? I think it's blue.
Yes, thank you. Trustee Boyd proposed that we insert the word "board" before "improvement."
Good point.
Definitely.
Yeah, good point.
I think that makes sense.
Yes.
Any other, I mean, thoughts, concerns? Okay. Mr. Floyd? Do you have the, I'm hoping that your notes are better than mine.
I've documented the, the changes, so at this point, we just need a motion to amend the survey instrument.
I would like to make a motion that we amend the survey instrument.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? If not, may I have a roll call vote, Mr. Floyd?
Trustee Baker?
Approve.
Trustee Boyd?
Approved.
Trustee Delay?
Approved.
Trustee Jones?
Approved.
Trustee Martin?
Approved.
Vice Chair Vannick?
Approved.
Trustee Wright?
Approved.
The motion carries.
Okay, so then the next item, and Mr. Floyd, I'm going to need your help on this one, authorization to conduct board self-evaluation.
Yes, I think...
Prior to the November 2023 Board of Trustees' meeting.
Yes, this was an action item before the E and G committee that was approved, authorizing me to distribute the tool in October. At this point, I think we need a motion to prove the E and G report as amended.
I would like to make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? There being none, Mr. Floyd, can you take a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Baker?
Approve.
Trustee Boyd?
Approved.
Trustee Delay?
Approved.
Trustee Jones?
Approved.
Trustee Martin?
Approved.
Vice Chair Vannick?
Approved.
Trustee Wright?
Approved.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd and team. Next item on the agenda, I would like to ask Trustee Delay for the committee report from the Finance and Personnel Committee, please. Trustee Delay, would you like to take the floor, please?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Vice Chair Vannick. The Finance and Personnel Committee met on August 15, 2023. The committee approved the minutes from its May 23, 2023, meeting. Two informational items were presented at the meeting. Kathy Musselman, Assistant Vice President for Human Resources, presented the Classified Employee Grievance Annual Report, which showed that the university had zero grievances for the 2022-23 year. And Mr. Joe Bales, Vice President of University Advancement, provided a philanthropy update. Vice Chair and trustees, the materials outlining the action by this committee were made available for your review prior to this meeting and are contained in your board notebook. Vice Chair Vannick, that concludes my report.
And just to confirm, there are no action items from the committee?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Very good, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, then, will be the, a discussion and a report on the permanent appointment of a chief audit executive, and this will be presented by President McPhee.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Members of the board, as you may recall, Ms. Dine Snawgrass, interim chief audit executive, officially retired earlier this summer. We didn't let her go easily, by the way, she's still here with us, and we appreciate that. While a search was being conducted for a permanent chief audit executive, Ms. Snawgrass has graciously continued to carry on the duties of the position until a national search was completed. Policy 808, compensation and reporting and approvals, require the appointment and salary recommendation of vice presidents or other executives reporting directly to the president to be approved by the Board of Trustees. Today, Vice President Alan Thomas chaired the search committee for this particular position. I'm sure he's happy to bring a conclusion to this search. Vice President Thomas and his committee recommend to me, Ms. Leah Laddley, as a chief audit executive, and I'm seeking your approval to appoint her as well as the salary requests. Now, materials outlining the actions were made available for your review, along with the resume of the candidate prior to this meeting, and are contained in your board notebooks. And both Chairman Smith and Committee Chair Boyd are supportive of this recommendation. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, President McPhee. I just want to confirm something from Mr. Floyd, and that is, this was not approved by the full committee responsible for this activity. So just want to be on the record with Mr. Floyd that presenting it to the board at this time is appropriate and is aligned with our overall governance.
Yes, and it's consistent with our bylaws, whether the president makes the recommendation to the full board for the appointee in this position.
Excellent. So I, what I understand now is I would like to call for, it is now time for me to call for a motion and a second to approve the... Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions for President McPhee?
I would like to ask one question, if I may, Chair, Vice Chairman. On page 35, maybe this is for Mr. Thomas, the budget for this, there's a line item that says chief audit executive, and it's different than the, so I assume this is split over two different departments or areas, or somehow, is that, is that correct?
You can go ahead.
Are you referencing the budget that was presented?
Yes, sir.
From last time. We've had to increase the salary offering for that, so we will adjust that budget going forward.
That budget number will be adjusted to match. Great, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for your question.
Any other questions, comments? If not, Mr. Floyd, may I call for a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Baker?
Approve.
Trustee Boyd?
Approved.
Trustee Delay?
Approved.
Trustee Jones?
Approved.
Trustee Martin?
Approved.
Vice Chair Vannick?
Approved.
Trustee Wright?
Approved.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would, since there are no more agenda topics for report or action item from the committee chairs, I would like to ask for the president's report. President McPhee?
Yes, Vice Chair, thank you so much, and members of the board. As always, I appreciate the opportunity to update you on board matters or university matters and activities since our last board meeting. As the Vice Chair noted at the beginning of this meeting, this is the beginning of a new semester, and I can assure you that there is great excitement on our campus. We are very pleased to report today that, for the first time in three years, we have seen an increase in our enrollment at the university for the fall of 2023, and we are particularly pleased. As you know, new students are the lifeline of any institution, and this year, with the great work of our admissions folks, our student affairs, our faculty and administrators, this fall, we are seeing an 11% increase in our new freshman incoming class. And I want to add that we have not compromised our academic standards, that we continue to attract the best and the brightest at our university. We also are very pleased to see a pretty significant increase in new graduate students. That number is, as of today, and I think today is census, we'll be sending in the data to the TIC and the policy folks tomorrow. I see that Dr. Witherow is shaking her head and with a big smile on her face. Our new graduates are up 10.69%. Our dual enrollment, an area that is really a priority for the state, we have seen a significant increase in the number of high school students taking courses at the university, that was up 34%, and a lot of credit goes to Dean Sluter and his staff at the University College. With regards to our transfer students, as you know, we have a significant number of transfer students, over 53% to 55% of our students are transfer, and we are very proud of that. You are aware of the struggles and the challenges the community colleges are experiencing with transfer. The last three-year data showed double-digit decrease in transfer community college enrollment. We are slightly down in transfer students, but I'm pleased to say that we are pretty much holding our, I would say, flat 1.9%. When you take in consideration our major feeders are seeing a 17% and a 19% decrease in transfer enrollment, that shows you the work that our staff has been doing to keep our heads above water in that area. The recruitment and the admissions of our students is 24/7, it's year-round. And in fact, tomorrow, we'll start our True Blue Tour in Tennessee, and we start right in our backyard. We'll be having our Rutherford County, an area, county... We'll be having our Rutherford County and area counselors and student reception beginning tomorrow for our Fall Class of 2024. We will go to 14 sites, both around the state and in Kentucky, Alabama, and Georgia. We will have our counselor luncheon and reception. I will give you a teaser to watch out for a major announcement from the university with regards to guaranteed admissions. You've been hearing a lot about that in the last week or so. Just a note, we have been guaranteeing high-ability admissions and scholarship for 30 years at MTSU, and we need to get that message out. So we are really looking forward to another exciting year. We continue to have record application, record admissions. And again, I want to point out, I think in the report, at the committee meeting, the provost and Dr. Witherow mentioned the tremendous work by our department chairs, the deans, and our faculty this summer in doing some really innovative work with regards to yield. It's one thing to get students to apply, and students these days apply to multiple institutions. You have to take that next step. You bring them to the door, you have to open up that door and invite them to come in and be a part of the family. And our faculty and staff and our admissions folks have done really an incredible job in that regard, and that's why you're saying we are now experiencing the kind of positive results in this year's class. The next part of my report, as you are aware, we've had several retirements within the college, academic college, over the last year. And I'm pleased to share with you that we have hired three, and I'm giving advanced compliments here, outstanding new academic deans to provide leadership for our colleges and schools. And today, I thought it would be very helpful and productive to have them come and give you just a brief presentation about themselves and the great job that they are planning to accomplish as academic deans of our colleges. And those three individuals include Dr. Napasha Cohn, dean of the College of Education, Dr. Joyce Heems, dean, College of Jones Business College, and Dr. Michael Hein, interim dean, College of Behavioral and Health Sciences. So I will ask Dr. Cohn to please come to the podium and introduce herself and tell this board what incredible things she's going to be doing for the College of Education. Let's give her a round of applause as she comes forth.
Good afternoon, everybody. I am so excited to be here. I have been on the road since this morning, meeting partners, celebrating students. For example, we did our Take a Tight in a School today, was the first day, so I'm excited to be here after those events. So I come to you via Kennesaw, Georgia, where I served as chair and associate dean while I was there, originally born in Miami, Florida, and I taught middle grade science for seven years before shifting to the academy. That is where I developed my passion for students, family, and community. And that's what we are committed to in the College of Education, where we are difference-makers. We plan to make a difference in the lives of family and community as we engage in this work. We plan on leading the future, and I have faculty, staff, and students that are committed to doing that work. We want to also be a leader in transformative and innovative programs. And by doing that, that is how we plan on positively increasing our student enrollment. So we are really committed to this work. I thank you all for your support and your continued support as we develop our educators for the middle Tennessee area and beyond.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Dean Cohn? Welcome to MTSU, and certainly, I know you'll be True Blue.
I am.
Yes. Next, Dean Joyce Heems from world-class Jones College of Business. Let's give her a round--
Good afternoon. What a pleasure to be here. Interesting journey that I took to get to this point. My career is a little non-traditional in that I started at a small private school. I then went to a large state school. I then went to a small private school, and now I'm back to my big state school days and my roots that are here. And it's like everything in my life lined up for me to be at MTSU at this point in time, and it is a blessing to be here. Early in my career, I was a Dale Carnegie instructor. We in the Jones College of Business have the exclusive rights in the southeast to have a Dale Carnegie course, and every one of our business students has to take that before they can graduate. Early in my career, I worked for banking and finance, and again, the things that we're doing in that program are just phenomenal. I wanted to share two quick things with you in terms of the Jones College of Business being a professional school. That means a lot. We put a lot of emphasis on that, and there's a great big posters all over our school talking about being a school of professionals. We've been, again, again, fourth year in a row, named as a top business college of distinction for '23-'24. Best Tennessee MBA school and programs, number three. Best Affordable Entrepreneurship Program, number 20 for 2023. Best Master's Program in Supply Chain Management and Best Value Accounting Degree Program. Those are just a few of the accolades that we've received, and we want to continue that. We recognize that we are to be a viable business entity at MTSU. We must focus on enrollment, retention, and graduation. And we're going to do that through the philosophy of elevate, engage, and empower. Just to give you a couple of things of what I mean there, we want to elevate our resources. We want to elevate our faculty teaching. I tell faculty all the time, go in the classroom, be the best teacher you can be, so I can then go tell that story. That's how we retain students, and that's how we graduate students. And of course, we want to continue to make sure we take care of our facilities. Engage alumni, business community, and students in any way that we can. And one initiative we have this year, I have an executive advisory council that we have just renamed to be the Dean's Executive Advisory Council because by April of '24, we plan to launch our Jones Young Professional Advisory Council that will just be alumni of the last 10 years. Our executive is a mixture of alum and just business leaders in the area, but our young professional will just be alums. That will give us a totally new story about what we're doing and how we're meeting their needs. And then, and that's just one example of our engagement. And we want to empower our students and faculty for success. Initiative of the university and one that I am very proud to be a part of is micro credentials, badges. We are looking at what in our program, I've asked every department chair to identify some program in their department, at least one this year, that we can add on a micro credential. That's what will be the icing on the cake that will make our students distinctive when they graduate. So many other things I could share with you, and would love to do so at any time, but thank you for having me today. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Dean Heems. And I will tell you, she has been out in the business community, have attended a number of events where she has spoken to our graduates and folks in the business community, and she's well-received. Thank you so much. And then finally, we leave the veteran, Dean Michael Hein, who comes from our outstanding, and I use that word not just because it's presidential speak, but our psychology department is ranked as one of the top in the nation. In fact, our industrial organizational psychology has been ranked number one for about 10 or 15 years. He's a professor in that department, and he's now the new interim dean of the College of Behavioral and Health Sciences.
Okay, thank you. As Dr. McPhee said, I came to MTSU in 1990, so I do bleed blue. I've been in the psychology department as an industrial organizational psychologist, where we have a master's program and a very unique undergraduate degree. In 2016, I received the Career Achievement Award for MTSU faculty. In 2018, our program was named the number-one applied master's program in the country based on a data-based study of our organization. And a large part of that was the activity of our Center for Organizational and Human Resource Effectiveness, which I directed from 2011 until the provost called me to come do this job. And we were asked by the president to present on both that number-one ranking and the center to the board before. So, you know, I'm not usually comfortable talking about myself, but I wanted you to know that Provost Burns had a reason for calling me, right? It wasn't just a random call. But to me, it was a random call because I got an email on Monday that said, hey, can we meet for 30 minutes sometime this week? And our calendar's lined up on Friday. So I spent a week wondering, why does the provost want to meet with me? My wife said, text me when you get out of the meeting, let me know if you still have a job. And I had three hypotheses, and they were all wrong. I did agree to the interim dean position for this year. And I want to take just a second to thank the board. I have served on boards. This is thankless work, if you do it right. And I have to admit, I was very nervous when I heard we were going to get an independent board. I was scared that it was going to be a political thing and that they wouldn't have the best interests of MTSU at heart, and you have proven me dead wrong. And I don't generally like to be proven dead wrong, but you have proven me dead wrong, and it is appreciated. It really is. As for what I'm doing with the college, I'm an industrial organizational psychologist. I bring process. The first thing I did was review our finances. I met with Mark Clark from our development office. I found out that the only program that's got an endowed account that's not a scholarship, and scholarships are great, but you need money for other things at a university. The only program that has an endowed account that's not a scholarship in my college is industrial organizational psychology. So we are going to start accounts, to get endowed accounts for every single department. This year, I'm focusing first on the emergency fund for students in the college, where they can get up to $500 grants to help them with a financial emergency because they need it. I've read these requests, believe me. And we need to get that account endowed so that it doesn't disappear over time, right? And then we'll do departments, and then we'll do programs, because that's how we'll be able to grow going forward. And I think some people are getting excited about it. The next thing I looked at was the programs. I met with every chair, and I'm starting to meet with every program director. My questions are, what are your strengths? What are your challenges? By strengths, you need to be able to tell me, if I'm a prospective student or parent, why would they choose your program? If you don't have an answer to that question, you need an answer by the end of this year, because I need an answer to that question when I'm talking to students and parents. So we're going to work on that. I'm going to do the same thing with programs. My goal is to do as much as I can of the same thing with the college as I did with the program of IO psychology, and that is to make us the best we can possibly be. Thank you.
You can see that I was absolutely correct when I said three outstanding individuals. Let's give them all another round of applause. Going back to the vice chair comment about exciting times on the campus, I hope some of you saw on day one, the first day of class, Daniel Breezy from Channel 2 spent about three, four hours on campus, giving the university an opportunity to show what an incredible institution. We had four segments live on TV to speak about our university. And just yesterday, we got a call out of the blue from Fox 17 that they wanted me to be on their show this morning at 7:45 to talk about another major recognition of the university. The Forbes magazine came out with its best places to work in the state of Tennessee, and MTSU made that list. And I was interviewed this morning on, live on Fox 17. It just tells you really the incredible institution we have. And a lot of times when we are up close and personal to situation, we don't really appreciate the great things in our own backyard. But I will tell you that while there are areas we are planning to grow and develop and do a better job, this university has a very good reputation and is respected, not just around the state, but around this region. And it's really due to the incredible faculty and staff, the employees, that have long tenure at this university. There's longevity. It's an incredible campus with incredible folks, and we're attracting some of the best and the brightest. So as I wrap up, I want to remind you that homecoming is next week. No, that was not a mistake. It is next week, with many related events, including our parade, our mixer on Middle, the alumni tailgate, and of course, the football game. So thank you all for the great work that you do for our university. We continue to push the envelope and making sure that people know that MTSU is the University of Tennessee. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
We're on mute, I believe.
Thank you, on mute.
You would think that after three years of doing things remotely, that I would get this right. I apologize. Anyway, but thank you, President McPhee. And I'd like to thank the new deans and interim dean for their work that they're about to perform, and thank them in advance, Dean Cohn, Dean Heems, and interim Dean Hein. Thank you so much, and looking forward to meeting you in person someday. I'd also like to personally thank Diane Snodgrass for all of what she has done for this university and for her willingness to really take on roles post-retirement. She's devoted to the university, and it shows, and her work has been exemplary. So on behalf of myself, and I hope I can speak on behalf of the board, thank you for all that you have done for us, and we wish you the best in your retirement and hope to see you around campus. Finally, as there is no further business, I would like to thank the board for its patience in putting up with a rookie in terms of chairing this meeting. I appreciate all of your input, and with that, I would like to call this meeting to an end. Thank you so much.
Thank you.